It's okay if I do it. I ask now. I wanted to get another picture. Sometimes it's okay.
You always gotta ask.
I always check that, too. You're probably the only person I filter a picture for.
Good evening. I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Board of Education meeting to order for January 9th, 2017. Would you please join me? Well, we can do the color roll, please. Kinda get back into it. Here.
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 Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Mrs. Pastert.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here, I think. Join me in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda is community contribution. Okay. This year, our school safety officers partnered with the Alpha Phi Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity to provide food baskets, including turkeys, to many of our school families. We are so thankful for our school safety department taking the lead and organizing this effort, going above and beyond. Chief Boone, can you come to the podium and tell us about how the food basket distribution went?
Thank you. First of all, of our officers that really helped at this event, one of our sergeants, we were two couldn't be here today. We talked about, you know, giving back and helping the community. And one thing that Dr. Karat has always told us is to think outside of the box with our families. And especially with, you know, law enforcement the way it is now, I kinda figured that we needed to think outside the box other than just enforcing laws but reaching our families. One of our sergeants helped us to come up with an idea to each buy a turkey. And there was only, there was only 22 officers. We were all gonna buy one or two turkeys. And it kinda took off. Officers got contributions from Walmart, got contributions from other police agencies. And one sergeant actually handed me a hundred dollars when he heard, you know, what we were doing. So, I definitely want to thank some of the officers personally that took this initiative and ran with it. And out of the 22 officers, we fed over 50 families. We did more than just give them turkeys. We gave them a full meal. And we did this in conjunction with Tanya Jenkins, who helped us organize students in our life skills classes to create boxes for us out of manual, Peoria High and Von Steuben. And Officer Angela Bell, who isn't with us here tonight, she actually got a donation from Walmart. Officer Lamont Johnson got a donation from Church of Living God in St. Paul. Officer Schubert, who if anybody watched the news is the guy who wore the turkey hat. He helped me go door to door and do deliveries. Officer Monica Wilson stayed late after work. I asked her last minute to help me deliver stuff and we were out, south in the Peoria, eight, nine o'clock at night delivering. Officer Chris Johnson, he's an alpha, but I'm glad to have him as part of my team, too. I definitely wanna steal him from you guys 'cause he's been a huge asset with us. Again, Officer Walter, he said he couldn't help deliver, but during a basketball game, he just pulled me to his side and handed me a hundred dollars and he said, "Go feed families." Lieutenant Justin Hoben, who does probably a remarkable job with community service in our department, helped deliver, helped schedule things, helped transfer turkeys, helped pack things up. And I just wanna thank the board and thank everybody for letting me be a part of this team and definitely wanted to shout out to these officers. Thank you.
Okay, for the contribution of the members and the members of the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, Dr. Karat, you have a token up there, your appreciation.
Sure. Can we ask one of the representatives to come up and maybe make a comment?
Okay, sure. Does anyone from the fraternity would like to make a, would you all stand if you're present? Welcome. Would you like to make any comments? Did anyone like to make any comments?
On behalf of the men of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, Alpha Phi Lambda chapter, we'd like to thank you all for allowing us to have this collaboration and being able to participate in the event with the officers in Peoria County. We appreciate everything you do and we can't wait to do a lot more with the community as well as Peoria Public County Schools. As you can see, my fellow brothers are here with me and we'd like to just tell you all thank you.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of Peoria Public Schools, we have a small token of appreciation. They do do a lot for us and we really appreciate you since I've started, you've continued to do even more. So, I just really want to say thank you for giving back to young people and some of you are involved with mentoring a variety of programs. So, please, we're actually even looking at additional mentoring programs. Some of you are having conversations about 100 black men getting into the schools. So, they're a great, a nice looking group, right?
Yes.
So, thank you gentlemen very, very much. And it takes that entire village and I know, you know that. And Peoria Public Schools of children, we need you also, your role models. You've sort of been there, you've, some of you have experienced what they're going through. So, it's really nice and we just wanted to say thank you for continuing to collaborate with Peoria Public Schools and most importantly, making a difference in the lives of young people. Thank you very much.
Well, Dr. Karat, shake your hand. I just wanted to say again, from our family engagement side of the world, when we reached out and asked about the help, we had our offices helping with Thanksgiving, these gentlemen helped with Christmas. So, all in all, we helped probably about 150 families with full meals for at least four to six meals a day. So, couldn't do it without your help. So, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And as you take your seat, I wanna say we appreciate your constant assistance in mentoring and voter registration and also working with the backpack events. Thank you so much. Okay. Our second community contribution award this evening goes to Dawn Jeffries and her fellow volunteers for Girls Light Our Way, or better known as Glow. On Saturday, members of Glow treated over 200 young public school, middle school and high school girls and their chaperones to a screening of Hidden Figures, the movie Hidden Figures. My granddaughter was one of those. Hidden Figures tells the true story of extraordinary African-American women or female mathematicians and who worked with NASA in the pre-computer, before the computer 1950s, and were instrumental in helping launch John Glenn, the first astronaut into orbit. Ms. Jeffries, are you with us this evening? Hi there, see you again. Would you please come to the podium and share more about Glow and this special event?
Thank you. Girls Light Our Way has a threefold mission. One of health, which has three components, one being physical, second being nutritional, the third is mental health. The second piece of that is self-efficacy. Do I have what it takes to do some big assignment, some big task? I always give them that big task and then they look back and see what they've done and they say, "I can't believe I did that." And the final thing, I'm a financial advisor by trade and so making sure that the girls understand the power and the value and just what it takes to do and deal with money. And so, they always have some fun but very revealing exercise that deals with money. So, those are the three components of the mission of Glow. The girls are always held to a high, a high standard. I expect them to present themselves in the community in such a way that they shine the light and that they do glow. I think it's important that we all understand the girl effect. I won't get into that too much, but many of us know that it's the woman of the house who makes the household decisions, right? And more importantly, it is those decisions that impact a country, a community's GDP. So, I want the girls of Peoria to understand what it takes to impact and to move their own needles. And I'm gonna do all that I can with every breath that I have to give them the power and the tools to achieve those things. So, for me, just to show them and to give, you know, to pay the money for them to see something simple as Hidden Figures was just a small, a small gesture that I could provide to them because there were people who were doing the work far, far before they even knew. And I would just want them to understand that things just haven't changed that much. And so, the work that we are asking them to do is not, not too dissimilar from the work that many of you had to do before them. So, we're just gonna continue to press forward and more importantly, it is a privilege and a blessing for me to be able to serve the young ladies of Peoria. And there's an adage that says, "If you can reach just one." But my, my adage is this, "I will be bold and crazy enough to try to reach them all." Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Peoria Public Schools, Bold and Crazy, we're always saying, "Hey, can you help us out?" So, we appreciate you reaching out and coming through your call and said, "Hey, what can I do?" And connected you with a couple of schools and you're at Harrison and Manual and you're looking to expand. It seems like it's a family affair because her husband is an alpha and so he was just recognized tonight. Dr. Jeffries, can you wave? So, thank you and thank you for sharing your wife with us. Yeah, she's a brain. She spends a lot of time at our school, so in a voluntary manner. So, thank you and please accept. And here's a container. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Jeffries, how do, girls that are interested, how do they get invited?
So, right now, we're housed at Manual and Harrison, but we're gonna have a meeting with Dr. Annette this week, I think on Wednesday, and then we'll just start to explain, expand slowly. The email address is girlslightourway@gmail.com. And so, that's probably the easiest way. We've got a Facebook page and a webpage, all saying the same thing, "Girls Light Our Way." So, we'll be in touch.
We appreciate. My granddaughter had a comment afterwards. I said, "What did you learn from the movie?" And she said, "Oh, that girls can do anything they set their minds to."
That's right. That's right. That's what we, that's what we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Awards and recognition.
Student Board member, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
Lynn Quester.
Ms. Lynn Quester is gonna do student recognition. Thank you.
Tonight, we have several students to recognize. As a student board member, I am pleased to announce the names of these students, their accomplishments, and showcase what a remarkable example they are setting for their peers. Academic Instructional Officer Dr. Jerry Bell and Superintendent Karat will assist in the presentation of a small certificate and recognition medal. Melise Williams is a fifth grade student at Von Steuben Middle School. She was one of 16 Illinois students who won $100 for their classroom in the Illinois American Water Imagine a Day Without Water art contest. Third, fourth, and fifth grade students from schools throughout Illinois American Water Service area participated in the contest. Williams' poster can be viewed on the Illinois American Water Facebook page and may be featured in customer communication pieces. Charlene Bokesh Parsons is Williams' art teacher at Von Steuben. Congratulations, Melise. Also, would Melise's parents, art teacher Ms. Bokesh Parsons, and principal Mr. Ryan please stand and be recognized?
And I'm gonna apologize first for your name right now. I don't know if I'm saying this right correctly, but Kieran Maloney, yes, okay, Kieran Maloney, a sophomore at Richwoods High School, was recently featured in the Journal Star for his work creating and organizing a student outreach club for young authors and illustrators. Triumvirate authorship members create novels, poetry, graphic novels, and manga, a type of Japanese comic. The club became an officially, oh my gosh, official, oh my gosh, I can't speak today, officially sanctioned club at Richwoods this year. Maloney, however, has been planning the club since he was in fifth grade. The group of creative writers and artists meets weekly in art teacher Suzanne Schaefer-Wilson's room to work on projects and exchange ideas. Congratulations to Kieran Maloney for his vision and perseverance in forming the triumvirate authorship club. Also, would Kieran's parents, club sponsor Ms. Schaefer-Wilson, and Richwoods principal, Mr. Elliott, please stand to be recognized? And finally, a group of young men from Manual Academy with members of Alpha Phi Alpha serving as their mentors assisted Officer Chris Johnson in distributing food baskets to families in the bitter cold. These students also will serve as ushers at the Martin Luther King Luncheon coming up at the Peoria Civic Center. Congratulations and thank you to these young men for representing the Peoria Public Schools. DeSergean Keys, Derek Winters, Amari Gibson, Cody Baker, who unfortunately is sick today and could not make it, Trindale Harris, Jakari Robertson, Brianna Boyce, and Tay Mickelroy. And finally, would the parents of these students, any of their teachers, and Manual principal Heather Young, please stand to be recognized?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Announcements? Are there any announcements?
I'll go first.
Atler?
The 2017-2018 Peoria Public Schools High School Curriculum Guide, Pathways to Your Future, is being distributed to students through the middle and high school guidance counselors this week. We encourage parents and students to take the time to study the guide, particularly the 16 career clusters, which will help students choose the most appropriate high school classes to meet their future goals. The curriculum guide gives information on early college opportunities available to Peoria Public School high school students through Illinois Central College. It is an important document to keep handy for all high school students as you register for next year's courses and beyond. And last but not least, the new year kicks off another series of monthly Parent University workshops. The January Parent University hosted by Richwoods High School and Mark Bill's Middle School will be held on Thursday, January 19th at ICC North Campus, starting at 5:00 p.m. Here to tell us more about the evening is Richwoods principal Brett Elliott and Mark Bill's principal Laura Rogers.
Thank you for having us tonight. We are very excited for this month's Parent University, along with Mark Bill's Middle School, Richwoods High School, will be your proud host. And our focus will be the career clusters that you just mentioned and our pathways. Students have amazing opportunities here in Peoria Public Schools as they enter high school. So, if you have a student who's a seventh grader or older, we highly encourage you to attend this amazing event next week, the Parent University. Peoria Public School, high school students have many opportunities, including taking dual credit classes at the high schools. They also have the ICC Early College Start, which is known as Strong Start, started this year, where students actually get to leave campus, go to ICC and take ICC courses for credit while they're in high school. They're also eligible for Pell Grants as well. Amazing opportunity. All three high schools also offer advanced placement classes. Richwoods has their International Baccalaureate Program. Peoria High has their Preparatory School of the Arts Program. Manual and Woodruff also offer career tech opportunities, along with our partnership with the Pathways. So, we have amazing offerings. We're gonna have panel discussions and share this with all of our parents and families at the upcoming event. And if you think about it, all of those opportunities also lead to dollars. That is thousands and thousands of dollars that parents and students can save by earning these credits at Peoria, that is especially through Peoria Public Schools, that puts them on a pathway to career and the working world. So, we're very proud of this opportunity. We're very excited and I'd like to hand it off to Ms. Rogers, who will conclude.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate what Principal Elliott said about especially our rising ninth graders. Seventh and eighth grade, current seventh and eighth grade students and their parents are highly encouraged to go and hear about opportunities that our high schools offer since a lot of it has changed since we were all in high school. We will have a limited number of activities for students in grade six and below, including Kagan Strategies and mental math. However, our focus is on our middle and our high school students as they prepare for next year's course registration. Parents, don't forget your passports and parents also need to RSVP online, found at the Peoria Public Schools website. Shuttles are available from Mark Bill's and Richwoods and then also our three high schools, Woodruff, Peoria High, and Manual. Shuttles will leave each location at 4:45. Again, Parent University's 5:00 next Thursday, January 19th, at the ICC North Campus and we hope to have a great turnout and see everyone there. Thank you.
Are there announcements?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Report cards and SAT. Parents, just a reminder that while today was the first day back for students, as we kick off the second semester, report cards for first semester will be sent home this Friday, January 13th. I hope all of you are making your parents proud. Also, a reminder to our high school parents that all high school juniors will take the SAT test this year. There are a number of online preparation aids available on the Peoria Public School website. Just look under site shortcuts on the first column of the homepage. In addition, the Illinois- In addition, the Illinois Math Academy and Carver Center are offering SAT preparation classes for college-bound students. The classes include timed practice tests and mentoring by teachers with experience in SAT prep. Individual subject classes and strategy planning is also available to help students maximize their SAT prep scores. For information on these programs, contact the Illinois Math Academy at (309) 692-8888. We will be posting these programs and other SAT prep classes information for our website to assist our students in their preparation for later this spring. Good luck.
Mr. Shaw?
More math, alright? Math Counts. Peoria Public Schools Math Counts teams made up of seventh and eighth grade students have been preparing for the annual district Math Counts competition to be held Saturday, January 21st, at Lindberg Middle School. Math Counts begins at 8:30 AM with the parade of mathletes and a welcome address by Peoria Mayor Jim Artis. Each year, Math Counts competition includes sprint rounds, target rounds, and team rounds, plus athletic games throughout the morning. Math Counts award ceremony will be at 11:45 AM. Best of luck to the Peoria Public Schools' Math Counts teams and their coaches.
And on that note, PHS, oh, okay, PHS events. This coming Saturday, January 14th, Peoria High School will be full of activity when the school hosts a junior varsity wrestling tournament, a women's varsity basketball tournament, and a middle and high school chess tournament. We encourage the community to stop by and enjoy the competition being held at Peoria High School this weekend, Saturday, January 14th. Thank you.
Reading buddies. Did you make a new year's resolution to become more involved in your community? You could be a reading buddy. Our students need adults to visit school and help them improve reading skills. We currently have 240 reading buddies that are actively reading with students and consistently show up. These folks efforts reach over 500 of our students. Currently, there are reading buddies at every primary building. However, we would like to see some community partners for Harrison and Lincoln. These buildings currently have individuals that serve as reading buddies. Business partners forming teams have been nice for our buildings as they typically continue the relationship year to year. We want to grow the Lincoln and Harrison reading buddies, numbered by 15 to 20 volunteers each. Additional volunteers would be welcome. Please visit www.puriapublicschools.org/readingbuddy to learn more. One more announcement here. Warrior Way Cafe. The Warrior Way Cafe will be opening for Thursday lunch beginning January 19th. Menus will be posted on Facebook and on the WCTC website by Tuesday morning each week, and reservations will be due by Wednesday morning. Patrons can dine in or order their lunch to go, and costs will be $5 for an entree, side soup, or salad and dessert. Lunch is served from 11:30 AM to 1:15 PM. The WCTC culinary arts students prepare delicious and creative menus each week, and as a proud graduate of Woodruff, I'm glad to announce that. That wasn't part of the script, I just did that.
Threecientos sesenta y cinco desayuno. Three sixty-five breakfast. Mr. Sierra is looking at me. The Peoria Public Schools Foundation's second annual three sixty-five breakfast will be Thursday, January 12th at 7:30 AM, at the WCTC gym. Join us to learn about the important work of the Peoria Public Schools Foundation, including adopted school, classroom grants, college and summer camp scholarships, and the Horizons Club, and to enjoy a delicious breakfast prepared by the WCTC culinary arts students. Reservations will be accepted until tomorrow at noon by emailing foundation@psd150.org. It's a great event to learn more about an organization that works on behalf of our students and staff and introduces you to an easy way you can provide support.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, district presentation. Crisis Plan Update, Mr. Boone.
All of our schools have submitted our newly created crisis plan, and those have been signed by the building administrators. These plans have our standard procedures, and then they have a checklist of appendix items that were needed for approval. The general plans themselves are standard and remain the same, and the appendix items are updated every year. So whenever you have a class roster change, bus change, things of that nature, those are the appendix items that are changed and updated every year, but the crisis, the crisis plan remains the same. The plans are on our shared drive for quick access and updating, so district administrators can all access that shared drive and see the plan themselves, see the floor plans and the bus routes. Appendix items are items that are exclusive to each building. Those items include the drills, the secondary evacuation sites, the hazardous materials, maps of the building area, and floor plans, trading dates with staff on the plans, and the master schedule, staff roster, and bus routes. So those are the only things that have to be updated, you know, year to year, because of course classrooms change. Some rooms may be a computer lab one year, then the next year it's a different room. So those things have to be updated on there so that we know the building plan is current. And these are updated yearly, or if significant changes occur regarding the specific appendix Peoria Fire, AMT, and Peoria Police will have access to the Peoria Public Schools' crisis plans, and those are very vital, just in case if we have any significant incidents. They'll be able to pull up maps of the building, they'll be able to access certain areas, they need to know what room numbers are what, they need to know what staff are in that building, and they need to know what the secondary sites that the children would be taken to. These plans are on flash drives, which are the drives that you guys have in front of you. We also are working with Peoria Police and Fire to have a standard communication channel via radio in cases of emergency. One of the issues is that our radio has a different frequency than Peoria Fire and Peoria City, so we have to have something uniformed, so when there is a significant event, we don't have to search each other on the radio, we have one, one channel to access. And Peoria Public School Resource Officers have also been trained this year on field trauma care to assist with first responders, and that was a very significant training. And Captain Gould was able to partner with the fire department to get us that training. So you already have officers in the building that can be first responders. And for you as the administrative staff, your flash drives contain the crisis plans by school, the site maps of the floor plans, and the relocation sites. Those are confidential for obvious reasons. I don't want relocation sites out, because those are secondary sites that our children would be taken in case of an emergency at the main sites. And those flash drives are for your review, and all of the plans are complete, and the relocation sites are on there under classified, so.
Personal cell phone numbers, those sorts of things, contact information is also in there.
Yep, all the staff contact information, stuff like that's all in there. Any questions?
Any comments, Sergeant Gould?
Actually, it's an exciting time, in my opinion. I've been around for a little while, and the crisis plans have modernized in the last year or so, so significantly, that it gives me a lot better feeling about where we are as far as first response goes, the shared drive, everything being so accessible, and the partnership, excuse me, the partnership with the first responders and their ability to have access to that information is critical.
That's huge. We had a meeting with them my first year where we pulled everybody together, and so we just sort of upgraded and improved the current information, and it's important that they have access to all the information, that the floor, the floor plans, contact information, that sort of thing, so, yeah, thank you both.
Can I have?
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
I'd like to commend Chief Boone and your staff on this. I've been training clinical interns in this area, in the schools, for almost seventeen years now, and I can tell you, what we would do every single year is we would require our interns to go to their supervisor and their building principal and to get ahold of the crisis plan, and then they would have to give me that plan as their university supervisor. And back in the day, somebody would pull out an old three-ring binder, blow the dust off of it, hand it over. This is timely, important, critical, you've pulled together the pieces, and I'm certain have improved our safety as a result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, this has been worked on for a while, and one of the things that Captain Gould has, you know, brought to my attention is that we're so behind, kind of in the stone age with this, and I'm a big non-paper person, I hate paper, so I want everything accessible. I want if there's a critical incident, that those officers can get on scene, stick a flash drive in their car, and they can see that map, they can see the roster. If there's a secondary site, they go straight to that site, they don't have to respond to the building, they know which sites to secure, and speed is of the essence of any emergency, so, thank you.
I think a big piece too was we asked them to provide, especially the first responders, to review the crisis plan and provide feedback. So they met by groups, for example, high school, right Captain? And they gave, gave us feedback on the high school plan, and then elementary and middle school and so forth, so they helped us to improve and make it even better, and we'll continue to do that. That's something we need to do annually.
Yeah.
Convene with first responders for additional feedback.
And I know that Captain Gould has been working on this for quite some time, so over the years I've seen, you know, it evolve.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to be clear, have you got that frequency set up between you and the first responders now?
No, and that's what I was kind of surprised about. It was something that we kind of stumbled upon in doing this, because it was one of my questions is, okay, you know, I try to put scenarios in place, and I put my mindset that, okay, if I needed to call somebody, what channel? And as of right now, you have to go to one channel for us, one channel for the city, one channel for fire, you know, and they don't know what to scan each time. So we're working together with them to get this straightened out.
Thank you, it's really important, I understand, from a long time ago that's been an issue.
Yeah.
But getting that resolved, though, you get that resolved, it really is a helpful to get it directed.
And being in law enforcement myself since 2004, I know this is the closest that all of our agencies have worked together, and I could probably say, Captain Gould has been a couple more years than me, but this is the closest that our agencies have worked together, and I mean, we email frequently, daily, about what we can do to just work in conjunction with one another.
Okay, appreciate the collaboration, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you. Broadcasting, Board Meetings.
Mr. Chris Copeland.
Good evening, President Ross, Superintendent Carr, and Board members. Here to provide you an update at Mr. Rother's request on board meeting broadcasts. And just for those of you that aren't aware, our current setup now is that our meetings are broadcast via Ustream, which is a free service with the commercials. There is a paid option that is quite expensive, about a hundred dollars a month for usage for two meetings a month. So we use the free version right now, it's a live web streaming service, and meetings are archived on the district YouTube channel by our technology department within 48 hours, so they go back and upload that to YouTube. So right now, the operation is that a tech runs the meeting. We have three cameras, two in the back on each corner, and then our robotic camera up in the ceiling, and so they control that switch back and forth and run the meeting that way. So prior to Ustream, we had a feed that was sent to Comcast, who then broadcast that feed live on a PEG channel, known as Public Education Government Channel, and we use Channel 17, which is the education channel run by ICC, and it actually goes, because it is ICC's channel, it covers both the Peoria and East Peoria markets. That meeting was then recorded on a VHS tape, we kept it here for a little bit in the building and then recycled them, usually after about a year or so. So there's several issues with that setup. Essentially, Comcast isn't set up to do live programming. It was all on a timer, and so every time we'd had time changes, somebody would forget to change the timer at the other end, and so our meetings wouldn't go live, or there would be an issue with equipment, and our meetings would not be on TV, and we'd start getting phone calls and those kind of things. And of course, there's no local contact because the offices were closed, so it was hard to get that rectified if there was a problem. So anticipating that we would have to go back that way, we started asking Comcast those questions, and to use the previous setup, we have a head end or a receiver here at the administration building and on Comcast's end, and to do that live, both those pieces of equipment would need to be replaced, which is about a $5,000 to $8,000 cost, and that's, we never even looked at additional equipment needs. There's the fiber line that comes into the building, which hasn't been used for many years, and we don't believe that that's functioning correctly, so there would be a cost for us to replace that, so all sorts of things going on there. So knowing that, Comcast contacted the city of Peoria to see if utilizing staff under the franchise agreement, which has, which they have built in, and there's two vendors that the city uses for that, one for the scheduling and then one for the equipment setup, and the city was very amiable to that and connected us with those vendors. So we had a meeting over break, and they came out, looked at our setup, and essentially were able to divide our Ustream feed, split that, send one feed to the city's vendors, use the other side to send to our Ustream feed as we've been doing, and they're able to take it that way, which of course is a lot cheaper for us, there is no cost to it, because all it takes is a splitter, and so they've actually already installed an encoder to test it to make sure it would work correctly, and they are taking a look at that now. So that is the current option that we have to rebroadcast on TV. If we choose to do it that way, meetings will be broadcast in real time, there is a slight delay because it is a stream feed, and it would be on the city's access channel, which would mean it's only on Peoria's market, not East Peoria's market. And then the other thing we talked about was doing a rebroadcast of the meeting, and they gave us a 10 o'clock or noon rebroadcast time on Fridays, and that would be needed also because we have holidays that come up, as you know, and so if we have a meeting on a Tuesday that conflicts with the city council's schedule, their meeting would take precedence, and ours would just be broadcast as part of that rebroadcast time on Fridays. We would continue to do the same thing as far as uploading it to YouTube and providing the use of Ustream feed, and then they would be able to take that YouTube file and download it and rebroadcast that on the Friday, so there wouldn't be any extra cost or any time for staff to do that. The other part that I wasn't aware of is that, under the franchise agreement, by doing it this way, it would not only go out on Comcast, but also on ITV3, which is another approved vendor by the city, so theirs would be Channel 11. And then, of course, we have direct support through the city's vendors. Other factors we've talked about, you may or may not know that Richwoods has a TV studio, and they use that daily. Right now, they're using it for their announcements, their morning announcements. They've used it in the past to broadcast basketball games and different events in the gym, and they haven't been able to do that for many years because of a cable that's underneath the school, down in the tunnels, that Comcast installed many years ago. There's a problem with the cable there, and so Comcast has agreed to assist us in replacing that cable so we can get that back up and running, so I know Richwoods is very excited about that. Continuing to discuss with Dr. Kearns and his students how they could be in Continuing to discuss with Dr. Kearns and his students how they could be involved with board meetings, and talking to him about the setup that we use now with Ustream, because it's an automated camera that we use for the most part, we're not sure that it is of educational value to bring them to every board meeting to man the two cameras that aren't used very often, and essentially it'd be zooming in and out. So we're trying to find more creative ways to utilize the work that they do. Again, they do morning announcements daily that go out schoolwide, and do news packages and event updates, so maybe using some of their work as to play during, prior to the meeting start. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Copeland.
I just want to say thank you for your research on this. It's been an item I've been interested in since I came on the board, but I do appreciate your research. I also appreciate the city of Peoria working with us on that. I think I'm going to give some credit to the superintendent, because we've established a pretty collaborative nature with a number of people, and I think with them doing it. I have a few things I was going to say about Comcast, but seeing how they're doing some nice things here, I'll buy my time. I appreciate them working with this. One of my biggest complaints was when Comcast came in here, that they don't have a local phone number. And that's not a small thing, but it is a problem in getting these communications. So a lot of this stuff, you basically had to do by pigeon carrier or in person. It's very difficult to get in contact with those people, but I really appreciate your efforts on this. And I would like the board maybe to discuss this at a future date, but I'm very pleased with what you've done with it. Thank you.
They have a local phone number now. They have a local phone number now.
Oh, good.
It's in East Peoria, though. Other questions or comments?
Yeah. We'll bye.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Are you up next, too? No, Mr. Myers.
And Mark Streamer. And Mark Streamer.
Okay. That's, I just got one name. So Peoria Public School Recycling Initiative, Mr. Myers and Mrs. Streamer.
Do you want to answer? All right.
Good evening, board members. Whoops, excuse me. Good evening, board members, and Dr. Carratt, Mr. Willis. In our Building Committee meetings with Dan Adler and Dan Walther, we've had some discussions regarding recycling programs that we had in place, and wanted to update the board on some of these programs from the other departments that are involved and looking forward on programs that we want to do. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Streamer, and he'll talk about a couple of the first slides that we have.
In the past, we had a program in place in partnership with Peoria Public Schools Maintenance where we were breaking down boxes, emptying cans, rinsing them out, crushing them, and they were being recycled. So they would go back to the high schools, get picked up once the containers are full and taken for recycling. What Mr. Myers found is that really wasn't an expeditious process. It wasn't necessarily fiscally our best bet. And we have looked into, explored, and found other options in partnering with the Peoria, with PDC. In particular, Vicky Sturgeon over there has been very helpful with us. We have started a couple of different iterations, but at this point, we have a single-stream process that has been put in place. We have three single-stream dumpsters that we have, as you can see in the presentation up there, that we have at the three high schools. We are continuing at all of the feeder schools, all of the other schools, to break down the boxes, break down the cans, send them to the high schools, and they all go into these bins. What we're going to be doing as a next step, I'll be meeting with Mr. Myers and his team, Michael McKenzie, on Wednesday, to look at next steps on how we can improve this by having it be more of a comprehensive program. We're looking at having bottle and can, recycling containers, and all of the key areas within our schools, cafeterias, teachers' lounges, other identified areas. We're looking at utilizing the recycled paper to go into these. So it'll be a very efficient process. We've talked about our needs going forward and increasing volumes and what have you, and again, Vicky Sturgeon over at PDC has been very helpful and very collaborative with us.
On this next slide, you see at the building level, we talk about the paper that's being picked up, and this is kind of the process that was used and what's basically what's currently happening. And it's just some information, some background. Basically, Buildings and Grounds is picking up these bins through a work order process, and once enough bins are picked up, then they're taken to Midwest Fiber. And you see approximately the money that's being brought in for it, opposing years past, many years, where a group was picking it up at a cost of the district. So there is a small revenue coming in, but it's still not enough to offset the labor costs to do it. But we were doing something. There was nothing in place, and we were wanting to do something to get some sort of initiative going. And obviously, we found it wasn't feasible, so we're trying to move ahead on what we would do. And as you can see there, about the integration for the single-stream container program that we're going to discuss with Food Service and Mr. McKenzie. And there's also some information regarding how they handle the confidential shredded bins, specifically at the administration building. And that's the vendor that currently is utilized for that. These next ones are going to show you technology. Michelle Seifel is on site if to answer any questions for these. But here's some background information on technology, as far as the vendor that handles the recycling, kind of the type of items that are recycled, the fact that you'll like that there's no cost to the district for these, and the staff just delivers equipment to the vendor. And like I said, there's a list of recycling items there, computers, monitors, keyboards, mice, not the other mice, projectors, cameras, TVs, and obviously other technology-related hardware.
Mouse.
Yeah. Textbook, something that we found out, too, that the companies come to the warehouse to buy old textbooks. This was new information for me that I got, we got through Matt Fogelmark, so we appreciate that info. And semiannually, books are recycled, and Midwest Fiber picks up those from the warehouse, and those include the library books and outdated textbooks. And finally, Buildings and Grounds is kind of some of the items that we deal with throughout the year, items that are either recycled or we have to dispose of, whether it costs or revenue coming in, scrapping old building material supplies, old equipment, lawn waste, and tires that can be a hazard, but they stack up in various places where the public or somebody has dumped them, and we have to dispose of them. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions of Buildings and Grounds and Food Service?
I have a couple of comments or questions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks very much. Appreciate that. The paper recycling. I recall the slide, so we're recouping about 40 bucks a month?
On an average, yeah. We did approximate throughout the year.
Okay, that's not a whole lot, is it?
That's right.
Is this because we simply don't have the volume, or could we be doing better? And, you know what I'm saying? Is this paper in every school across the entire district?
Not every school. It was upon request how it started. We offered these bins to the different schools who wanted to initiate a recycling program of their own.
Sometimes it's part of the curriculum, too.
Correct.
Teachers, at Whittier, we did it. We had one of those blue beans in the back of the...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have any past practice on recycling practices for the district overall? And that's for, actually, for anybody?
No, best practices have ever been in place that I know of.
That's right. Just inasmuch as recycling is pretty much ubiquitous now, almost everywhere you go, as a large organization, we must have an enormous amount of waste that we might be able to do better by, given the fact, though, that you don't want to spend 60 bucks to get worth rid of 40 bucks worth of paper.
Correct. I think the single-stream concept is why this will work and can expand on it and make this better.
Okay. Related to that, please. How are we managing confidential information on paper that might be just tossed off from the school?
It's shredded.
It's shredded.
Does every school have a shredder? And is every school instructed to shred? Something we ought to think about, maybe.
Yeah. I know, do I have any principals here?
You know what? This just came out of left field, so I'm not...
I know. Usually at the school, central office, I mean confidentiality is huge because of the vast, I mean, the number of buildings. But being a principal at a high school or even an elementary, you print something off and then you just sort of tore it up if you did not have a shredder. The level of confidential documentation, it's minimal. I think it's at this level that it's huge, it's a task, and we have a huge shredder that we utilize.
I just wanted to be mindful of that, and frankly, paper is old school. We should worry more about hacking than we should worry about paper.
Right, right. Exactly.
But as regards textbooks, swear to God, I'm almost done.
Keep going.
As regards textbooks, there's the Follett Buyback Program that I saw, correct?
Right.
And if we have textbooks that are out of date, then those get recycled? Or, yeah, that aren't usable?
I assume so. This is just information we gathered from Matt Fogelmark at the warehouse who oversees the textbooks.
Okay. To the extent that out-of-date textbooks still have value to someone, might we spend a little time looking at? And what came to mind is many, many years ago, Hettie Elliott decided to go to Cuba, and she was doing the best she could about finding old textbooks and broken crayons, and as I recall, in any event. It may be that what is one person's recyclable stuff may be another person's treasure, and to the extent that there may even be families in our own district who might value a book, any book? Just saying. Find a way to use them.
Well, I'd like to get more information from Matt Fogelmark on the frequency of when those go, what is considered outdated, and if what an alternative let you discuss, so I'd be more than happy to discuss that with him.
Thank you very much for your work.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Shaw?
The single-stream bins, do those generate an income or cost, or are they neutral?
Yeah, it would be a cost, but we're trying to minimize our exposure for the district.
Really, any way that we look at it, it's a cost. I think we're looking at where it's the most efficient, the most comprehensive way that we get, it's inclusive, that everybody can utilize, and we can take stuff out of the stream that's going to recycle and where some of it can be used. Definitely. Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
I had one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to appreciate that the pest control was so high-tech now that you had that included. I did have a question. I didn't know, might catch you guys off guard, but it does deal with Buildings and Grounds, but not with the recycling. Would there be a chance for you to give a report sometime about the solar program we were looking at in the previous building?
Yes. I'll talk to Dr. Carratt and Mr. Willis, and we'd be more than happy to give you an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
I'm just wondering about the streaming process with the recycling. If more schools would be encouraged to recycle throughout the district than just the ones that are, I saw mostly only middle schools up there that were, you know, with the recycling programs that had bins. And I know personally at Richwoods that we don't really have many bins at all in any of our classrooms or throughout the school. So if more schools were encouraged to recycle, would that kind of outweigh the cost of the streaming services overall?
I think it would minimize the cost as far as the single stream, because you have the middle school, primary schools on one level, and then the high schools currently have a single-stream program in place. But I do agree with you when you say at, basically, you're talking classroom level and then filtering through there.
Yeah, well, because I know it's not really encouraged, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak at the other schools, but I know that at Richard's it's not always encouraged very well, and a lot of paper that could be recycled is often thrown away, so it's just...
Well, it's definitely, we need to explore and basically expand on what we have. How do you get the process? How do you get them from the classroom? And we're talking specifically high schools, but from the classroom to the one location. And that's something that could be easily talked to with the principal and how that process, and it's just a matter of getting bins that are adequate for the classroom level and how that processes from there.
I would just jump in that one of the things that this whole conversation line started from for Buildings Committee is a conversation about whenever we have a bigger event at a school, maybe a PTO-led kind of thing or whatever, you sell 200 cans of soda, and 200 cans of soda go in the trash, because there's no other place to put it.
Specifically, the stadium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Specifically, the stadium. So, yeah, I think the more that we can make the school world mirror what our kids are going to see out in the other world, the better it is.
We'd like to get the kids involved as well. Part of the plan is to have the system set up and in place, and from a student level, get the kids involved in getting excitement up and having the kids themselves utilizing the various receptacles that we've got out there, and that kind of generates some enthusiasm there.
And I think at, like, for instance, I'll use Pepsi as one of the vendors that may have a program that they pick the school, has a champion that oversees it. There is a lot of time involved, but it identifies a champion that can oversee that at the building level at each school, too. And but that, I'm sure that involves plastic, aluminum, all the above, not just paper.
Yeah, recycling is a big deal at the primary level. It's, as I said, it's part of the curriculum. They learn about the four Rs, and so it's a huge deal. So at high school, that connection needs to be made, and then we'll have to find out, you know, what's, how much money would that generate? And as Mark said, the cost of doing, you know, the cost of the time and efforts.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch, you're going to do a presentation on career and technical education update.
And he has students and staff waiting patiently. Thank you, guys.
Coming in.
Good evening, Board President Ross, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Carratt. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share information about our outstanding programs at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. Joining me tonight is Principal Dr. Cindy Janowitz, as well as four former career and technical students. Following a brief PowerPoint presentation, the students will share their experiences that helped prepare them for the success that they're enjoying today. We'll conclude some comments with Dr. Janowitz about the future of Woodruff Career and Technical Center. Let me begin with some specific programs at the Technical Center in enrollments. We'll start with the students and where they're coming from. We have 33 students coming from Manuel, 101 from Richwoods, and 161 from Peoria High this past semester. Now, several of those students take more than one class as well. That should be noted. As we get into the specific programs, we'll begin with cosmetology, hair braiding, and barbering. Currently have 51 students working towards 1,500 hours in cosmetology, and another 39 students in hair braiding. Their certificate requires 300 hours. Then finally, in barbering, we have 31 students working towards 1,500 hours as well. In the construction field, we have 19 students enrolled in construction, where they'll earn first aid and CPR certificates, and 13 students who finished the construction program previously who are in work-based learning, where they're actually working with various labor unions and various trades, and ultimately identifying a specific trade to concentrate in on. They can earn an OSHA certification as well as CPR and first aid. They can earn an OSHA certification as well as CPR and first aid. We have an auto body program as well. Currently, there are 40 students enrolled in the auto body program. Although there's no certificate, those students are heavily sought after. Recently, in a discussion with Mr. Brown, the instructor, he, he has shared with us that all of, nearly all of his students are gainfully employed working in the, in this field. And then he's received two calls already this year from potential employers wanting to know when they can have access to our students who have successfully completed the program. And we have our culinary program that we've already discussed tonight. Currently, we have 54 students in the culinary arts and they're working towards Safe Serve in a Pro Start certification. One of their students, former students is with us tonight as well and he'll speak here briefly. In the health occupations, we have 28 students enrolled in health, specifically health occupations. That ECC stands for early college credit or dual credit in this instance. And they're working towards their CPR certification as well as first aid. 10 students in our CNA program, which is also early college credit, working towards CNA certification, CPR certification. Another seven students in phlebotomy and they're working towards certification as well. Now, those students will flip at semester and those seven phlebotomy students will be in the CNA program and the 10 CNA in phlebotomy. In our emergency service program, we have 21 students enrolled in the emergency medical tech program. Well, they can, will earn CPR certification and an EMT license. We have another seven students enrolled in fire science. This is the first year for fire science. Both of these programs are early college credit as well. Looking towards the future, next year, we are proposing a law enforcement program. This would be a two-year program and as you can see, in year one, students would take introduction to the criminal justice system, which is ICC CRJ, Criminal Justice 110, juvenile delinquency, police operations, and introduction and investigations. These are all dual credit, early college credit. In year two of the introduction to criminal justice system, professional standards in criminal justice, selected topics in law enforcement, basic life support, and emergency medical responder. Now, students who finish the two-year program at Woodruff will only require six additional hours to earn a 30-hour law enforcement certificate from Illinois Central College. They would have already earned nearly half of the credits required towards an associate's degree as well. What we'd like to do now is introduce a few students before we turn it over to Dr. Janowitz. With us tonight from culinary is Mr. Eric Cortez. He's going to share some of his experiences that have led to the success that he is enjoying now in a culinary program in college.
It's right here, okay. That's perfect, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, administrators. I want to thank Ms. Jody for this opportunity to speak about our wonderful program where we learned a lot of great things. I am a freshman in ICC. I just finished my first semester, going back in about five days. Culinary is a great, wonderful program. I had so many beautiful experiences. It's taught me so much going on in my ICC career. It's taught me a lot about responsibility, maturity. When you're in a classroom, maturity levels, it's okay. You step into a kitchen where you have knives, you're burning oil, hot stuff, so you have to be a lot more mature and you have to earn the right to be in the kitchen. Being in the classroom is great. You're sort of used to it. You get, growing through middle school and, you know, stuff like that, you go, fall into a routine. It's where you go into culinary and you fall into, you're switching it up, you take a bus, you go, you drive, you're studying your license. So being able to be there, the program definitely makes you grow up in a sense. So having that responsibility of you have to get this done. We had, also have competitions where we're cooking by ourselves. You have to learn how to cook and how to cook safely so you don't get nobody sick. And so we just learn a huge amount of business as far as that goes. We got to go to an awesome competition in Chicago at the Marquette Place where we placed top 10 in both areas. Management fourth, culinary seventh. I was part of the culinary team. So it was, it was all paid for us and it was great. Ms. J was there with us, helping us out and it was just an awesome experience. And what I take most from it is the fact that I was able to get out of my classroom, go to Woodruff, experience, meet new people, and have a background where as far as my Pro Start license certificate goes that I got from them. Because I'm, I was a second year student, so I was the, part of the first graduating class. So it was, it was awesome and my name is always going to be in the history books for that. So big props to Ms. J and the new students that she has. Not as good as old ones, but. But this year, please root them on. They're going to be going down to that competition again and we're going to take the first place trophy in both areas, so management and culinary. So, and a huge shout out to everybody who's been helping us, all the administrators and everybody that's come and supported us. It was a great time serving you guys and getting to know all of you and, so thank you. That's, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. Let's, let's bring up Sierra Williams. Sierra was a student in the cosmetology program. She's currently employed at Northwoods Mall at Brow Art and she also has a business that she's running out of her own home as well. So, Sierra.
Well, I graduated from cosmetology in 2014. It's definitely has taught me a lot and I didn't think I'd get as far as I did, the place I am now. Well, I was working in a salon as Salon Suites, but I decided to do hair from home now only because I like to create my own environment and it's just more easier for me, plus I'm trying to save money. Well, I, I do like, I like that I got into the field of cosmetology because there's so many doors, you know, that open for me. I've been focusing on nails. Right now, I'm focusing on eyebrows and lashes. And then pretty soon I want to get into makeup. In the future, I do plan on saving up my money and eventually opening up my own salon. And I also do want to open up a after-school program for little girls. I have a little girl and she thinks she works with me when we're at home. So, just like, you know, little, little girls, you know, or barbering, whatever. I just want to help out also. So I just want to thank everybody for everything they have done and it definitely has definitely have helped me a lot. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. Jacob Barber is with us tonight as well. He is from the construction world. He's currently employed at Rothan Company, gainfully employed. Share your experiences with us, please.
Hi, I did both years at construction for my junior and senior year. I went from not wanting to show up to school to, hey, I want to get there because I want to do my project, you know. And Mr. Bricks was a great teacher with Dr. J, always love and support, you know, to help you along the way. So, but yeah, I am currently a mill worker, which is part of the carpenters local 237, so I am in the, in the union. I work for George J. Rothan Company. So I worked on the city chambers at the city hall. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. And right now, we just finished up our fourth courtroom for the county court. So, you know, refinishing pews and doors and machine indoors, hollow metal frames, you know, anything and everything, that's what we do. So just thanks for the program and I hope to see it continued.
Thank you. Also from construction, joining us tonight is Mike Baker. Mike, what you tell us what you're up to and how it relates to your education at Woodruff?
Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Baker. I also graduated from Richwoods and Woodruff, class 15. And I bounced around a lot after high school. Like every summer I was doing construction, they'd be like, hey, do you know how to use this tool? Yeah, I do. And I just bounced around. I worked at Coca-Cola in Bartonville for a little bit. And I can thank Mr. Bricks for that one because they asked me, what makes you qualify for this job? And I'm like, I'm motion certified. They're like, that's good enough for me. So I learned how to drive a fork truck, learned how to do a lot of heavy machine operating like that one. I'm currently working at Parsons Metal Craft in Rowan Oak. I worked CNC machines, so I cut steel all day and turned it into stuff. But that's what I do now and it ain't bad. I'm also going to ICC for law enforcement. So I wish I had some of those classes a long time ago. It would have saved me some money. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Before we turn it over to their leader, Dr. Janowitz also wants to recognize Yeti, who's in the culinary arts. And with us tonight and also, please stand, Yeti. And Mr. Michael Bricks, who is in our construction. So let's turn it over to Dr. Janowitz.
Hi, good evening. Happy New Year. On Friday, we had institute and I kept saying to everybody, see you tomorrow, see you tomorrow. Wait, no, it's the weekend, so, but we're all happy to be back today and all the kids were excited and I'm excited to be here tonight. So I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing. We're trying to promote the programs. I've been on the afternoon show, Good Day, in the early, early November, where we had the mammography van at the school for Fall Into Good Health. We showcased all of our programs at that event, had a big turnout. So we're very proud of any opportunity we get to, to share in the media. We also, Mr. Bricks, construction students, they were asked to build benches for the Knowles Neighborhood Association. And so we were able to donate one of those benches and that was a nice media event. We want to include the community in all of the things that we were doing, so we were very excited when we were asked to make those benches. We are looking for other areas to promote the program. I'm going to work with Chris Copeland also to, you know, promote from within as well as other ways to reach out into the community, to get the community involved and, and us out there into the community because we have a lot of really great students who are very talented and we want to promote that. We are currently going to set up tours. We're going to have the rising ninth or ninth graders or 10th graders come and tour the building. You know, the juniors, we want to start getting those students into the school. Some of the students don't even know what programs exist and/or that we even exist. So we want to get those students in to tour the building. I'm also going to go into the high schools and talk to the students about the programs to help promote. We want to build up those numbers. I'm actually going to be at Peoria High School on Wednesday and Thursday to talk to those students. And then again, with the community outreach, you know, a few years ago, if you remember with the tornado in Washington, we were asked to partner with Caterpillar and we built a schoolhouse to be put back into their little miniature golf course, the benches for the Knowles community. We also worked with the Renaissance House and built cabinets for the Renaissance House. We cut hair with the, we have kids from Youth Farm come in to get their hair cut or their nails done. We always like to show up at the Women's Lifestyle Show and do nails. That's a, a big thing. You know, the students are always excited to talk to people when they're doing the nails. And so we're enjoying that and looking for other opportunities to get out, get involved, and showcase what we've got. As far as extending the hours, that's kind of in the discussion phase right now. We don't really know what that's going to look like, but we are having conversations surrounding that topic as well. Any questions?
There are a lot of wonderful things that are being done at, down at Woodruff. And, and it does my heart good to hear how great, you know, that you guys have all obtained gainful employment from your training and everything. However, I couldn't help but notice in the numbers that were displayed that the number of students coming from Manuel is extremely low. And can you respond to me why that is?
Manuel has a health act program similar to what Woodruff has. So a lot of those students stay at Manuel to take the health act classes. And then, then they'll transfer when they're seniors. They can transfer to CNA and phlebotomy programs. And so I also think it has to do with the population. You know, they're the smaller number of students in the junior and senior class. But we are working with the high school counselors to recruit students into those programs. But, but we, we noticed that as well.
The fact that they, they have a manufacturing program at Manuel High School might also take students who might have otherwise chosen to go to Woodruff for similar, not identical, but similar programs.
So those programs that are being, that are at Manuel presently, then are these certificate programs also?
I believe they are certificate programs as well, yes.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. For the culinary arts people, Mr.? Okay, you talked a lot about the program and you mentioned safety quite a few times as far as in the culinary arts and working with food and everything. Now, when you're in cla, during the class period, do you have to get a sanitation license or food handler's license while you're attending class? Or is that something that is after, after you have completed the course?
That was something that was brought with the class. We were kind of, when we did our book, we, we had our book and we had to learn everything. We had to learn our temperatures for our meat. We had to learn how we could wash our hands. So we were certified towards the end of the year. Our teacher taught us mostly of how, within the book, we were also able to do that. So we learned how to wash our hands the correct way, learned how to handle certain meats, learned that once we used a certain item with meat, like a knife or anything, we couldn't be able to use it because it's already contaminated. Learned about dishes and how we could prepare them and.
But nothing, nothing through the Peoria Health Department?
So the curriculum that we teach is the Pro Start curriculum. It is led by the National Restaurant Association Educational Foundation. So what we teach is serve safe, which is the same serve safe that is taught by ICC. Also, all the food handlers go through it that work anywhere in Illinois. So they are both trained for the food handler's certificate as well as the serve safe certificate, which is a manager certification. So with that particular training, they can operate in a management function as well as operate their own business. We, we train them up through the point of the health department, 80% that they need to pass. In order to actually step foot in our kitchen, they have to pass the 80% serve safe test. The only thing that we have not been able to provide for them is the actual certification other than the Pro Start certification, just due to a cost. Certification itself is $155 just for the Illinois part. So that is something that we need to look at for future budgeting. So I hope this answers your question.
It does, thank you very much.
I was also concerned with the numbers from Manuel. But do you know the numbers from Manuel in the emergency service and law enforcement?
The specific numbers, do you have to know?
I, I don't know those numbers right off the top of my head, no. I know fire science, all of the students in fire science are from Peoria High School, those seven. But I, and I do not know the numbers from Manuel for the emergency services.
I'd like to know what those numbers are, if it's possible. I want to make sure that all of our children have an opportunity, especially for those two areas because we in the, in the community have been pushing the city to hire more minorities in those two areas. And it's a perfect, perfect program because there's an ordinance that the city put in place. And coming off the police department, you can almost go right into the police and the fire. So I, I'd be concerned with those numbers are. And being a proud graduate of Manuel Training High School. Show my age. That was a very active school when it came to construction because a lot of the small houses on the south end was built by those students. And Lynn Unis is one of the companies that's still in place, came out of the printing classes out of Manuel Training High School. I am pleased that we've opened up this area so that kids that say, you know, I don't want to go to college, but I want to make a very good salary and do a very good job. And you can do that in all the areas that these young people. and you can do that in all the areas that these young people are working in. So, I'm, I'm hoping that Manual is really participating to the utmost in those classes. So, I just would like to know what those numbers are, and if there's something we can do to assist and make sure that kids understand and parents understand how important these areas are, because I have a nephew that was an ironworker and made more money than a lot of people sitting around this table, so, and he had his own business. So, I would like to make sure that that happens, so if you do that for me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Kostick, I too have been watching the numbers and understanding that this has just started. And Ms. Jenkins, I'll call Ms. Jenkins up also. I can't, I can't see her from where...
Dr. Jenkins, I'll be...
Yeah. Dr. Jenkins. We talked about that, I don't think there's anybody, I don't, I don't think Manual's, there's, there's nobody from Manual in the fire science program, and I believe I asked for the next, the other program, and I don't think that we had anybody also. So, Ms. Jenkins, do you have any additional information on that? But what we did talk about is moving forward, making sure there's strong representation from each, each school and working with the leadership at the buildings.
I think we have to make sure that all of the, everyone is getting the same, the same message as far as the programs are concerned, because there does, I mean, just looking at the numbers, there does seem to be a disparity there somewhere, and I'm not sure where it is, but it's very, very alarming.
What I want to make sure that we reiterate is that with Manual, they've got the, like you did say it already, Tom, but they've got the childcare and they've got the, they're getting their certificates in some other areas that, that Woodruff does not offer. So, what you're seeing, the disparity in the numbers that you see here is representation of those students taking access to the health, health career, fair, health career opportunities and manufacturing.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is that when we're doing these types of presentations, we need to include those numbers of the students at Manual, so that it, we can see the overall picture of the, the trades, the technical...
Yep, yep. We'll do that, we'll do that, that makes sense, we'll do that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
But nevertheless, I mean, would like to see more in the fire science program, right? Because I asked about that, and more in the police, you know, the police program, the explorers program, for example.
Mr. Wild.
Yeah, I had a question, and only because I think the program's doing well, I'd like to see it go big. Peaking Vocational, students from that, build a house every year. Do you have any idea how far away we might be from that goal? And I realize that's a, that's a big step from where we're at. I didn't say it was a huge...
My understanding, and I've went to high school in Morton and was involved in Peaking Vocational Center a long time ago, and I think there's probably a lot of legality that goes along with building a home, that, and I believe years ago, we had talked about it and chose to not move forward in that direction and continue to work on projects at Woodruff, as far as helping students become a plumber or electrician, a carpenter or along those lines. A work-based learning program, which we briefly talked about, which I probably should sit down, because I could talk for the rest of the night about that. It's a program where our students go to all the different trades and spend a week at the different union halls. New to District 150 this year, phenomenal. I, I can't say enough about what this is going to do and, and open doors for our students in the future. It's just an incredible thing that I'm so happy to be involved with, and it goes along that line as far as building a home. It's going to get all those students into the different trades to be an ironworker. They're going to spend a week with the ironworkers, a week with the electricians, and they're all going to come out of this program with one foot in the door with any of those trades they have an interest in, so it's, it's, it's not building a home, it's the next best thing right now.
I appreciate you, Ian, thank you.
Let's give perfect, some kudos, because we're working collaboratively with them.
Yeah, I, I work for, I'm a District 150 teacher. I teach construction in the morning at Woodruff with the Career Tech Center. In the afternoon, I work with Chris Kendall at the Perfect Office. That's the work-based learning program. It's a three, three-hour class, so from twelve-thirty to two-thirty each day. Our students, back in August, we started spending a week at each of the trades. We went to the electrician, the plumbers, the ironworkers, the steam fitters. Now, after Christmas this week, right now, we're doing our first aid CPR training. We'll do some more interviewing schools, skills next week. At the end of the month, all of our students will be in an apprenticeship program with a business in the Peoria area, so at twelve-thirty, they'll go work with a contractor. They'll be either with a plumber, electrician, they're placed where they want to be. These students have a head start that they, I'm not sure that they could get elsewhere without this program. I mean, they, they have their foot in the door to an apprenticeship that is just an incredible thing for them, that they get to spend the week there, they learn a lot, they decide what they want to do. We do have two students that are going to college this fall, but the rest of the students all will go ahead and start at the end of January, and then it'll be their option, if they want to continue on, go ahead and complete the process and become an apprentice over the summer, and that will be the beginning of their apprenticeship, which whatever trade they want to be in.
And it's a competitive process, there's an application and recommendation. How many are involved this, this time around in the work, and there, there are limited spots?
There are limited spots. This year, we have seven students from District 150. Today, being the first day back after Christmas, I had over stu, ten students ask me today, where do they get the information for work-based learning for next year? So, the counselors apparently have been talking to the students prior to the, I'm not sure when the process starts with the counselors, but it was very interesting today to have students come to me, asking me about work-based learning, where's the application at, how do I get it? I talked with Chris Kendall, it's online. He also sent me paper copies today, so this, this fall, we will have an, an overabundance of students in the work-based learning program, which again, I think is a, a great thing for us and for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Bricks.
Thanks, Dr. Krup.
I just had a comment, or not even a comment, but maybe a question. I don't hear much about cosmetology and the natural hair care, and I know you have it in the brochure and you, but, but the, the promotion of small business is everywhere now. That's all you hear is, is support small business. I, there, there are some lucrative careers in hair care, because we know that women are going to take care of their hair, and men are going to take care of theirs too, and hair and nails and so. I, I would, I would hope that we, we put as much focus on those entities, especially natural hair care. I mean, I'm a cosmetologist myself, so I, I, I know that that's the creative part of people, they, you know, they, the ones that are in it really enjoy it, and I know the students really enjoy it. So, I would like to see us make, make sure we, we showcase that kind of thing as well.
Were they invited to see this?
Well, we, we, and we did ask for volunteers, we went to the teachers and asked for volunteers, of students who were going to come, you know, that weren't going to be too shy to talk, who are going to be able to talk about the programs. Actually, the natural hair care classes, all blocks are full, so we do have a number of students in those. When we did our Fall Back to Good Health and we showcased all, showcased all of the programs, we had a line with the natural hair care, the students were braiding hair...
Because that's the trend now, you know.
Yes, yes, and so those students have to have a hundred and fifty hours before we can open it to the public, for them to do public hair, so just now, second semester, they'll, we'll be able to offer that as one of the services for the, for the public when they come in. So, but our cosmetologists, you know, we have Sierra here represent us today, we have a number of students who...
It's a growing industry across the country.
Yes, and so...
And I was, I helped put together those, that regs for, for those three hundred hours for, for the natural hair care by visiting, you know, the state legislators and trying to get that through and everything, so...
Well, it's growing, so...
Two amazing teachers, Ms. Lacy and Mrs. Bolden, right?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Yeah, so.
No question. Just along with that. When, when we're talking to cosmetology class, classes, as women, you know, we're, we're always concerned about beauty, so let's look at it from the whole perspective of a woman's beauty. Have we ever considered, along with the hair, the, the natural hair, the, the cosmetology aspect of it, the nails and everything, have we ever considered? Women nowadays are, are doing the eyelashes, you know. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know.
She's, she's...
Right, I know, but I'm saying, you know, as a part of the curriculum.
They, they do spas, facials, massages, you know, so the whole curriculum, and Sierra could probably talk to it, but it does encompass all of those things and makeup and things like that, and I, and the curriculum encompasses all of that, and then the students usually find a niche that they like, like, you know, Sierra said that, you know, she did nails and now she's working more with the lashes and starting to look at makeup more. So, I think it's like construction, you know, you get a little feel for different things and you see what you might like, and, you know, not everybody wants to give a pedicure, but they might like to do a facial, so...
Very true. Well, I know that people will get their hair done and their nails done before they buy food.
Well, we're hoping that they'll come and get their nails done and their hair done, and then go to the cafe and have lunch, so...
Right. Thank you. Other questions? Uh, sir, yes, sir.
As regards your la, your last slide, and I'll be very brief, the promotion of existing programs, specifically media, community outreach, are you familiar with St. Baldric's Day?
No.
It's an event that happened, I, I don't know where it started, but it happens on Bradley University's campus every spring, and it's a result of Pan-Hellenic Council and fraternities and sororities getting together. And essentially, what they do is they have volunteers from the local hair cutting establishments around either Bradley or around the city, and once a day, they have, they celebrate what they call St. Baldric's Day, and you raise money to get your head shaved, and then that money goes to patients with cancer. St. Baldric's Day might be a natural outreach for you. You're probably going to lose money on Rhettberg and me and Walther, and sorry, Dr. Ekejak.
Shaw. Don't leave our Shaw.
Not going to raise a lot of money.
I take Uber to get a program called Baldbrick.
Any other comments or questions?
I hate you for that.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks.
And to the students, thank you too. Yes. Thanks to the staff that are coming out and is... Yes. Thanks to all the staff that came out and still have to go to work tomorrow. The last presentation is on the overview of facilities, projects, and timelines, and...
Mr. Willis.
Miss, oh, I was like, pretty go, he, Mr. Willis.
And Kevin, hi.
Mr. Willis. Just got back from vacation sick.
That's not an eye chart at all.
Just real briefly, what we're going to do here is just give you a very, very quick review of what is planned for, what projects we have in the works for the county school facility sales tax, or based on that passage. Sorry. The sched, can you shrink that so that they can see, there you go, all of the years? Even though that's hard to see, basically, in terms of format, what you have is schools don't go, coming down the left, and what you have going across the right are years 2017 through 2021, and you have those further separated by quarter, first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter. What we simply tried to do is take all of the projects that we advertised and put together for the county school facility sales tax and slot those in terms of timing. There's a hundred and thirty-four projects, all twenty-seven schools are represented. We wanted to make sure within available resources that we subdivided those projects so that we could handle the work, so that we could manage the work, so we could spread the work fairly evenly, work within existing monies, and what you have is a discussion draft or a, a first draft, if you will, of what it is we propose to do, when, as of this point with those monies. 2017, we'll have fifty-four projects as it stands right now. 2018, we'll have twenty-six projects. Fifteen, seventeen, twenty-two will be the number of projects that we will have in the following years. Primarily, your out-year projects are related to air conditioning, because lots of those projects take so much time that we had to basically cluster those, and so you'll see schools like Manual and Richwoods early on, and there's quite a bit of lead time connected with air conditioning, so you don't see any air conditioning projects for 2017. You see that starting in 2018. We're going through a process now soliciting architectural assistance to help us with the design and management of, of air conditioning projects, which is where seventy percent of our monies related to this project will go. But essentially, the first sheet gives you a summary of the project phasing for ten schools. Page two gives you project phasing for nine schools, and then page three gives you project phasing for eight schools. Again, twenty-seven schools are represented. The project timeline spans five years. This is our first pass. We'll ask on January twenty-third that you approve a finalized version of this document between now and then, should you or others have comments, thoughts, suggestions relative to the timing of, of projects. We would, I'm happy to take emails and, and we'll process those, and, and that's how we'll come up with our finalized timing. In terms of the list of projects, you'll recall that we approved a list of projects that would be funded with the county school facility monies. So, so in terms of the what, that's set, what this conversation would be about is the when, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, this is a discussion draft. We'll present to you for approval on the twenty-third, a finalized version. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone?
Just a brief question, I'm not sure whether I, I didn't hear or what, but the projects that are going to be, going to be handled over the next few years, are any of them overlapping from one school year to the other?
Yes.
So, is that the, like the roofing or the HVAC or which one?
HVAC primarily.
Is that the one?
Yes, yes. Air conditioning projects for Manual, air conditioning projects for Richwoods are perfect examples. Well, they'll actually start in 2018, but it'll, it'll take from 2018 through 2019 to, to complete those.
Okay, so hypothetically, I'm not sure what, I don't remember what the numbers were, but let's say twenty, what year is this, twenty sixteen, seventeen? Okay, so for twenty...
Time flies.
Okay, for twenties, for twenty seventeen, the numbers that you quoted for twenty seventeen, are those numbers also included in the school year of twenty eighteen, nineteen?
No.
Okay.
Most of the projects for twenty seventeen are pretty short.
Okay.
And we'll be able to knock most of those out, well, we'll be able to knock all of those out basically summer 2017.
Well, I, I'm, I'm speaking of subsequent years also, not just seventeen, not just eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen and eighteen, but eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. That's, those numbers, that's what I'm asking, are those numbers going to carry over? So, if you said twenty-seven projects for this year and forty for next year, for next school year, are part of those twenty-seven included in the forty for the following year? Can you follow that?
Um, yeah, I do, and there will be some carryover.
So, those numbers are, those, those numbers...
So, the numbers that I gave you basically are, those are the projects that we will start that particular year. -that particular year.
Gotcha.
And then some won't be finished, you know, for another year or a year and a half later.
Some will be finished, some will be finished. It would be nice if they had a, you'll get that document, but.
We got that. Yeah, that's on.
Did that answer a question?
Do we have this? I know we have a presentation.
Um, I thought so. I'll make sure you get it.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
It's not in the packet that we have.
Okay.
And I just realized I didn't include it in the packet, I apologize for that.
We know you were on vacation and then you came back ill.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions at this point in time? Okay, yes, that's it. Do we have any comments?
Mr. Willis? Any comments from Kevin or Mr. Hyde?
Is he at Kevin?
No, he's for another part.
Okay.
The bond resolution.
Find out where we are, I want to sleep. Okay. Okay. We'll need to move on to this.
You have to read that long.
I don't know. Just read that, just read that. I'm gonna get off my dang-
Change the dissertation.
Change the dissertation. When, when somebody else is president. Okay. We are now at the place on the agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by, elected to serve, oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we are all, we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific person, personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our secretary will collect, will be collecting those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under the age of 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Mr. Terry Knapp.
Thank you. I, I assume that everything is going well with Mr. White and his group on the stadium, and you've got that taken care of, because you're borrowing $50 million, is my understanding, against these tax anticipations, and not one mention of the stadium. Do you understand? I mean, the taxpayers are gonna be irate if stadium is not part of this deal. They were led to believe that. That having been said, three, three things I think are very important for me to mention tonight. Number one, you have a settlement, number 10, on your agenda tonight with a former staff member. For those of you that are new, I want to explain something. There were 10 teachers, when Lathan came here, there were 10 special ed teachers that were let go in her first year, just dreadfully punitive. 10. They went back, the lawyers, by the way, went back and charged you for this negotiation, but they went back and offered those 10 teachers a settlement. They didn't accept it. They offered them a higher settlement, I think it was 10 grand or something like that. Eight of them took it. The other two did not. These teachers were teaching in the most difficult places in this city, and they were treated like pigs, okay? I went to the courthouse and watched the first session downtown. I went to Ottawa to watch the trial in Ottawa, and the three judges, it was ruled two to one against the teacher that you're going to consider settling with, and I, I thought it was egregious that, that the court settled that way. But I'm not a judge, and, and, you know, I'll be the first to admit that. Been in a lot of courthouses with a lot of judges, however. So, but my point is this, I urge you, because I'm gonna FOIA the information, how much this cost you? This cost you big dollars out of the education fund for this litigation with these 10 teachers. Do you understand what I'm saying? First year in the system, and this lady who comes in here and says that Peoria is dysfunctional, dysfunctional many times in the newspaper, you know, creates this mess with 10 special- you can't even get special ed teachers to come to this district. How many are you short this year? Ask your superintendent that. Ask anybody that. You're short special ed teachers, and you treat them like cattle. That's sad. Second thing I'd like to mention is, the other night, Ms. Cruz isn't here tonight, she fell on her shoulder. She's okay, but she didn't feel like she could come. There was a time when Lathan was here, when, when she treated, and board members treated audience participation like we were criminals, okay? And she, they had Ms. Cruz crying one night, Miss Lathan did, you know, crying in tears. This lady puts her heart and soul, she had a report tonight that's gonna knock your socks off. When she comes to the next meeting, it's done, and I've, I've seen it, and it's excellent. Like, all of her reports are excellent. I was disappointed at the last meeting, because we have had good board participation and respectful board participation with the audience since Lathan left, and Ms. Butler left, as far as that's concerned. But I went to a city council meeting that they orchestrated, and two former principals talked to city council meeting, and again, they were treated shamefully. And the city council has an ordinance that was developed in 2007 to be respectful to audience participation, invite audience participation, and not be demeaning to people. At the last meeting, Ms. Cruz mentioned that two high school people, the first two black teachers, I think she said, were Mr. Hinton and Ms. Gibson. And one of the board members demeaned her and said that that was not true, in front of everybody, in front of the media and everybody. Ms. Cruz was right. The board member was wrong. And I'm sure that that board member probably apologized to you for being wrong, and, and causing that, that flare up in that meeting. And having said that, I would hope that board members would reserve not demeaning people like Ms. Cruz in the audience, or Mr. Sierra, I could care about myself, I'm demeaned all the time. And the, the former board for six years demeaned everybody. This board has been very good, and that's in the direction, I'm sure, of Dr. Karat and the board members, taking on the skill of treating the audience like human beings. The last thing I'd like to mention is the influence peddling in this district. One of us closed, because influence was used by members of this community to get the charter school, four schools, four high schools, the charter school. Unsuccessful. It is uns-, I've talked to parents, it's unsuccessful. You can say what you want to, they can say what they want to, unsuccessful. But we gave it to leaders in our community because they wanted it. We also gave the endowment committee to those same people. They kicked the people, and I was one of the members of the endowment committee and donated thousands of dollars, my own money, to the endowment. They kicked us off.
Thank you.
Oh, is that, I couldn't hear the buzzer.
Okay.
I guess I'm going deaf.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Mr. Savino, Sierra? I believe Mr. Sierra left, did he?
Fast as bedtime.
Linda Wilson?
My name is Linda Wilson, and my address is 1823 South Idaho. Good evening, Superintendent Karat and President Ross and other board members. I am a second grade teacher at Treewind, and I come before you tonight to speak about something that is very near and dear to my heart, and that is the Grow Your Own program. I am a 2011 Grow Your Own graduate, and I'm here representing the support of Peoria Federation of Teachers Local 780. For the past several months, I have been working closely with Grow Your Own Executive Director Kate Van Winkle, and, and she's out of Chicago, and our union president, Jeff Atkins Dutrow, to garner community support and develop a Grow Your Own model that would be tailored for our school district. We are excited about this program and how it can positively impact our students. We've also talked to Dr. Karat and worked pretty closely with Dr. Ike Jakku about our ideas. By now, everyone has heard or read of the scathing 24/7 Wall Street report labeling our city as the worst place for African Americans to live. This report is not only damaging, but it's disheartening. As a lifelong citizen of Peoria and a 1992 Manuel High School graduate, I want to be a part of the solution to this problem. Last month, I attended the Citywide Change Peoria event with other community members to discuss the report and how we can improve the lives of our citizens. Almost all conversations led directly to education. In our school district, over half of our students are students of color, yet only 5% to 6% of our teachers are teachers of color. That is a huge discrepancy. The diversity discrepancy needs to be corrected. I became a part of the Grow Your Own program in 2008. I was a teacher's aide at the time, and if it were not for the Grow Your Own program, I would not have realized my dream to become a teacher. Currently, there are seven graduates that are teaching in Peoria. There are three imminent musts that we need to act on. We must find a way to address the lack of teacher diversity in Peoria Public Schools. We must find a way to develop a pipeline or a pathway for our high school students to become teachers. We must find a way to assist individuals in our community who have a talent and a passion to teach, to become teachers. There are many benefits to having a Grow Your Own program in our community. First of all, provides local role models for our students. Our students deserve to have role models who look like them. It will reduce the teacher shortage and improve teacher retention. Teachers who are homegrown tend to stay in our local area. It will increase teacher diversity and, most importantly, dispel stereotypes. Last month, through the efforts of Dr. Ike and our union, I was able to attend a Grow Your Own webinar here, and it was hosted by Verona Area School District in Verona, Wisconsin. They are using innovative and bold strategies to implement and fund their Grow Your Own program, such as one of the, the ways they're using as reprioritizing funds and using some flexible recruitment strategies. I believe that we could use Verona and, as well as other school districts, as a model to frame our program. I also participated in a, a summit through the Department of Education in December, the Teach to Lead Summit, and it was, the theme of it was about diversity and inequity and solving those problems. And I work with a group of individuals all over the country, most importantly with Kate Van Winkle, to develop a, a national coalition, national model for Grow Your Own teachers. I think the thing that I really want to point out today is that Grow Your Own is on our district's strategic plan. There hasn't been a whole lot of talk about that strategic plan lately. But the time right now is to implement this program. We owe it to the students and the families to explore ways to improve their educational experiences and outcomes. And I believe that the Grow Your Own program is, is a step in the right direction, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any response to audience participation? Yes, please. Mr. Jackson.
First of all, that was me that made that comment, Mr. Knapp. And it wasn't done in a mean-spirited way. I did not hear I say high school, which is why I mentioned Alice Taylor with a laugh, because those of us that knew Alice Taylor, knew how Alice Taylor was, and if she had have been here, she would have been jumping up on the ceiling. After the meeting, I did talk to Mrs. Cruz to say, then she told me, I was talking about high school, I didn't hear that. There's no way I would ever be mean to anyone.
I understand.
And, and I think everybody in this room knows that. If I wanted to be mean, of course, I could do that, but I would not do that. So it, it was not done in a mean-spirited way. I was just answering something, because Alice Taylor came to my mind, and a lot of things that she did came to my mind, which was funny. But you need to know that when I say something, it will not be in a mean-spirited way, especially if I'm sitting around this table. So it wasn't done that way, and it's unfortunately, yet she took it that way. Okay?
Other responses to audience participation?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
I would like to respond to our second grade teacher from Treewind and her eloquent discussion on Grow Your Own. A little while earlier, at the very beginning of this meeting, we also heard about Glow. One of the things I'm excited about when I begin looking at programs and begin thinking about how we can better distribute our precious resources that we have, and we don't have a lot of them, I, and you've heard me say this before, I like to see outcomes. Grow Your Own, seven teachers, an eloquent second grade teacher, now that's something you can put your finger on. That's an outcome, that is some success. And who knows how far the ripples in the pond go from these seven teachers and each of the children that they affect, but we certainly can look at them and say, here's evidence of a program that works. I'd like to highlight these programs more and more as we see them. And one final thought, some of you know I've been a public educator, school counselor a long time ago, and you might be surprised to hear me say this, but I'm not a real big fan necessarily of self-esteem, but I am a real big fan of what our colleague talked to us in Glow. I am a big fan of self-efficacy, and self-efficacy is what good teachers do, to create the belief in my capability of carrying out this task and knowing that I can do it. You gap self-efficacy and you improve self-esteem. I'm very pleased to hear about these programs. Thanks very much.
Dr. Karat?
In reference to Grow Your Own, Ms. Wilson is the poster child for the program, and, and that's really a good thing, because she's obviously credible. She came through the program, and I just really love the passion. Since I started, Ms. Wilson and Ms. Atkins Dutrow and myself have been talking about it, brainstorming. We've had a very successful career in program in Peoria Public Schools years ago, and it has lapsed because of cost. And so we're sort of revitalizing. I'm very optimistic that something exciting will happen. There are lots of ideas that we're brainstorming, so we've sort of actually given her the green light to continue to sort of focus and continue to work with us, and we're working, she's working very closely, collaboratively with Dr. Ikujaku. We have conversations actually with Bradley University, Mr. Roberts, and the new provost, Walter Zakari, he's, he knows we've had conversation. We went out to lunch, we've talked about it, they're interested- We have conversations actually with Bradley University, Mr. Roberts, and the new provost, Walter Zakari. He knows we've had conversation. We went out to lunch. We've talked about it. They're interested. ICC's president, Dr. Court Bailey, we've talked about it. They're interested. I had a conversation, actually visited Eureka College with Dr. Bell, Jamelle White. They're interested. So it's a matter of being bold, as Ms. Wilson said, and building something. And I was actually also thinking it possibly could be an alignment project, so let's just continue to, yeah, I mean, let's just continue to, we have lots of ideas and individuals are interested, you know, the next level, junior colleges, four-year colleges are interested. So I think it will get down to money when everything is said and done, and that's where we are with that, but we need to continue to build. I have some ideas about an education pathway I'm all about. We heard about Woodruff, for example. It's, you know, we saw the five, the Explorer Pathway and other pathways. We need an education pathway, and I've said that from day one, since I started. So it's all good. It's all good. So thank you, Ms. Wilson, and thank you, Mr. Atkins-Dutrow. And Dr. Ikujaku, thank you too.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Wilson, thank you very much for your passion. One of the very important things that I, you know, I know needs to be done is that you need to tell your story, just like you told your story to us. You need to tell your story to those young people that are in school, in high school right now, and haven't made up their mind of where they want to go and what they want to do. And instilling in them, the most important thing is that you can be anything that you want to be. You just have to have the heart and the desire to do it. So keep on telling your story, because it could make a very huge difference, even if it's only one person, and they see what you've done and what you've accomplished, and they'll say, "I want to be like her." So thank you very much for your passion and what you're doing.
I was just going to say, I'm really pleased to be a part of that. I had participated in a program with Bradley University and the state of Illinois, a collaborative program where your tuition was at the junior college level, and it was somewhat of a Grow Your Own, and I was able to take advantage of that and got my degree at Bradley, one of the degrees I had at Bradley. So I think that, they always used to say, "There's nothing new under the sun." Maybe we should revisit some of those things that really worked for us, for our students then, because there were a number of people that went through that program. So, something else to look at. Proposed expenditures under $2,500. Any questions on any of those expenditures? No? Seeing none. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
President Ross, since our last board meeting on December 12th, we received five new requests, and under the pending status, there was one pending request noted on December 12th. That request was filled. So to date, we have received five requests for this calendar year, and our running total is $4,453.50 in order to...
All right. No questions on that? Seeing none. Payment of bills? Oh, consent agenda. Mr. Adler?
Thank you, President Ross. The consent agenda consists of eight items tonight. Item number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting, a total of $8,079.31 year-to-date, $162,186.13. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is payment for travel. Item number four is board travel request. Item number five is a human resources report. Item six is the adoption of amended board policy 4:110 transportation. Item seven is the approval of Peoria Public Schools 2016-2017 crisis plan. And item number eight is an item for pay increases for off-schedule employees as amended. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? I would like to pull number eight. May I have a motion and a second for all but number eight?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Would you, are there any discussions on any of these items? Seeing none. Would you please call the roll?
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
President Ross, I move that we adopt item number eight, pay increases for off-schedule employees as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? To verify, I am abstaining from this particular vote because I have a family member that's part of this group. Would you please call the roll?
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Abstain.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Deliberation agenda, resolution authorizing general obligation alternative bond issuance. Mr. Wallace?
We've got Kevin Hyde from Stiefel Nicholas here to give us a very quick overview of the resolution that we will ask you take, we'll ask that you approve tonight. Kevin?
Thank you. Good evening. I believe the resolution did go out in the board packet, so everyone, I think, has had a chance to probably look it over. It is a relatively short resolution. It will be published in its entirety along with the notice regarding the filing of petitions. Basically, again, you are authorizing up to $50 million worth of bonds. As we've discussed before, that will probably be in more than one series, one series coming here sometime in April and another series in a couple of years. It does kind of list in general terms what the project is, and basically, you know, it involves rehabilitation, construction of repairs and maintenance items on your facilities. It is pretty broad language so that you can basically do work on any of the buildings in the district with the monies. You are only pledging the sales tax monies. You're not pledging any other operating funds of the district towards the repayment of the bonds, and so that's spelled out as well. Again, the notice will be published as required by statute in the Journal Star, and be happy to ask, answer any questions anyone might want to ask regarding the resolution. I think it's, again, been prepared by the bond attorneys, Chapman and Cutler.
Any questions on the resolution? Or for Mr. Hyde? Okay. You have a motion?
President Ross, I move that the board approve a resolution authorizing the issue of general obligation alternate bonds of the district in the amount not to exceed $50 million for the purpose of improving the sites of and altering, repairing, and equipping school buildings and facilities.
Second.
Second. Any conversational discussion? Can I sign him?
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Number 10, settlement, settlement agreement for Lawler. The proposal is that the board approves a settlement agreement between the Board of Education and Ms. Lawler.
So moved.
I have some details that need to be entered into the record on this.
Okay. Mr. Redbird?
Okay. I'm recommending that the board approve a settlement agreement with Amard Lawler in the manner of Amard Lawler versus Peoria School District Number 150, case number 12-CB-1299 in the United States District Court for the Central District of Illinois, the significant terms of which include dismissal with prejudice of the pending lawsuit, a general release of all claims by Ms. Lawler, no employment, no reemployment of Ms. Lawler by the board, confidentiality by Ms. Lawler, and non-disparagement by Ms. Lawler. The settlement agreement also includes a monetary payment of $350,000 to Ms. Lawler and her attorney to be paid by the board's insurer and the board. And the board's share of that payment will be less than $100,000, with the remainder paid by the board's insurance carrier. The board's share, as I believe all settlements are paid out of the tort immunity fund, correct? And not the education fund? Okay. Thank you.
Any, do we do, any discussion?
I heard a motion for Mr. Adler. Yeah. Kind of died on the vine there.
Yeah, I did. Okay. Okay. Would you call the roll? Did we give the second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Yeah, Ms. Jackson seconded. Okay. No more discussion? Do you call the roll?
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Expulsions. Mr. Shaw?
President Ross, I move that the expulsions listed on the January 9th, 2017 report be approved as presented.
Second.
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item number 12, expulsion with expulsion held in advance. I move that the expulsion with expulsion held in advance listed on the report, January 9th, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Item 13, revocation of expulsion held in advance. I move that the revocation of expulsion held in advance listed on the report, January 9th, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Doctor Davidson Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kastik?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Presentations and suggestions by board members. Mr. Walter?
Didn't have an opportunity to comment on it before, but on the settlement with Mrs. Lawler, I think it's incumbent upon this board and the leadership of the superintendent, which I'm confident of, that we don't get into a position of having to make a settlement like we did tonight. I think that's a responsibility of everybody here at this table and the leadership of the administration, and I'm confident that won't happen, but I think it just reminds us, when we don't do that, what can happen to us. That's my comment.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Report from board committees. Any committee meetings held yet?
We have a policy meeting that has been rescheduled for January 17th at 10:30.
10:30?
I thought you said 10:30. 9:30. I'm sorry. And I would like to, I would like to commend the Richwood Knights, Richwood High School, for the wonderful artwork that they provided to us.
And this is Mark Bill.
This is Mark Bill's here. So, great job, and Richwood, if you're not here, thank you.
They were here. Anything else? Anyone else have any reports, board committees?
Buildings Committee met over the holidays and continuing the discussion on future Peoria Stadium. We're kind of outlining a timeline, but there's a lot of, I guess, discussion to still occur on pricing and how everything would play out logistically if we were to go into an agreement with the infamous Adam White Group. So we are set to meet. We need to establish the next meeting date. I'm thinking early February. Daphne, looking at you.
She's not looking at you.
She's writing. She's writing. Anything else for the good of the order?
Teacher advisory will also meet on the 17th and 5th every two six.
Five to six thirty.
Well, New Year is over, but wishing everyone a happy New Year and a prosperous year in 2017. Mr. Adler?
I move that we adjourn.